Anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving our consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Our consent agenda is approved. Um, we are now going to move on to our action items. Um, do I have a motion to approve our collective bargaining agreement?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I would like to welcome Director of Human Resources, Sonia Saylor.
Good morning. Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley, members of the school board. I am very pleased to announce that Education Minnesota Edina has ratified the tentative agreement that is before you this morning um for a new two-year collective bargaining agreement effective July one, 2023, um and extending through June thirtieth, 2025. Our negotiation teams worked collaboratively to problem solve and reach compromises that allowed us to provide a fair and competitive salary and benefits package being proposed for your approval. I would like to commend and thank EME President Jason Doctor um and teacher negotiators Laura Messler, Dave Boone, and Michael Smith for their partnership and dedication to this important process. I would also like to thank the district team represented by board members Chair Allenberg and Director Burman, Director of Finance and Operations Mert Woodard, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Smazel, Assistant Directors of HR and Business Services Camille Sherman and Jason Stageman, and of course, Dr. Stanley. Um, many thanks to all of these people for their hard work and commitment during this process. You have been provided with a summary of the details of the tentative agreement, draft, and final versions of the proposed contract. Highlights of the economic improvements and changes include step advancement for eligible teachers in both years of the contract, an updated salary schedule that provides more competitive salaries in comparison to similarly situated districts in the first year of the agreement, and a two percent schedule improvement in the second year of the agreement. Two additional steps were added to the salary schedule to recognize the district's most experienced teachers, namely Steps twenty-five and thirty. A two and a half percent increase to the district's contribution towards health and dental insurance will go in place as of January one, 2024, and a four and a half percent increase as of January one, 2025. An October first, 2023 sunset date was added to the severance provision to allow the district to receive additional revenue in the form of levy for OPED expenses equal to twenty-five percent of its severance costs for teachers. This tentative agreement is within the authority um provided to the district's negotiation team by the school board, and as a result, I seek your approval for this agreement. Do you have any questions?
Board members, do you have questions? Director Gabler?
I do not have a question, but I do want to um thank the negotiating team um for the work that was done on behalf of the district and our teachers. I know that that's not easy work, and um I just appreciate the work that went into making this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Just echoing the same. I'm proud of this district. I'm proud to be a part of it and really grateful to all of our educators and to all of our cabinet members who work in partnership. Thank you.
Great. Um, all those in favor of um of approving the collective bargaining agreement with EME, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The collective bargaining agreement with EME is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to move to our second action item. Um, is there a motion to approve the certification of property taxes payable in 2024?
So moved.
Is there? Thank you. Um, I'd like to welcome a Director of Business Services, Mert Woodard.
Good morning, Chair Allenberg, members of the school board, Superintendent Stanley. Um, this is a continuation of our truth and taxation meeting from December eleventh, where we'll actually ask you to certify the taxes payable for 2024, which will fund a portion of the 2025 fiscal year operations. Um, we're recommending that you certify the levy in the specific dollar amount of seventy-two million, four hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. And with that, the recommended action is before you.
Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor of approving the certification of property taxes payable in 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The certification of property taxes payable in 2024 is approved. Thank you, Director Woodard. We're now going to move on to our discussion items, and our first discussion item is our annual financial audit presentation for the fiscal year that ended in June thirtieth, 2024. Director Woodard?
Yeah, Chair Allenberg, we are pleased to have Mr. Bill Lauer, Principal Auditor from the audit firm Malloy, Montague, Karnowski, and Radasevich, otherwise known as MMKR. He's here to present the results of our fiscal year 2023 audit. Um, before I turn it over to Mr. Lauer, just want to make a couple remarks. First, to acknowledge the dedication and competence of our business services staff. Um, audits are, um, of course, expected, but always a, a pretty big undertaking, especially as the Government Accounting Standards Board imposes new auditing standards for us to implement. And so I just want to give a shout out to them. I think residents of the district and the school board can have a great deal of confidence in our level of competence and stewardship of, of public funds. Secondly, our audit will be submitted for the first time to the Association of School Business Officials International and their Certification of Excellence in Financial Reporting Program. And so we're looking forward to receiving that award in the spring or summer of 2024. And with that, I will pass it on to Mr. Lauer.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Allenberg, members of the board, Superintendent Stanley. Thank you for making time for me on your agenda this morning. Um, what I'm going to do briefly is just kind of go over what our role is as auditor and kind of the division of responsibility for the documents that you received as far as what is responsibility of the district's management and what our role is in, in what you received. Um, I will also go through, oh, thank you. Uh, I will also go through the audit process and the results and opinions that we issued as a result of that process. And then just briefly, I'll touch on a few of the very high-level financial results for the year-end audit, which was year ended June thirty, uh, 2023. The first thing I need to do is make sure that you understand as the board charged with oversight of the financial reporting process, what our role is. Uh, all of the information, the data, the documentation, the disclosures that go into putting your annual financial report together is prepared and is the responsibility of the district's Business Services Department. Uh, we come in and audit that and provide an opinion as to whether it provides a fairly stated financial picture of the district's uh year-end financial position and operations for the year-end or audit. Um, in addition, because you annually earn more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal grants, you're subject to a single audit of those federal grant awards. It's more of a compliance audit specifically on how you spent those federal grant dollars. Uh, as part of both of those processes, we're required to review and assess your internal controls over reporting and your compliance uh with financial reporting and, of course, with federal single audit requirements. And we issue a separate report letters on each one of those assessments. And then you're finally also subject to an audit of your compliance with Minnesota laws and regulations. The state puts out a, an audit guide for Minnesota school districts that we audited to and provide a separate report letter for that as well. Uh, as far as the results of the audit. There we go. Um, once again, we were able to provide what is referred to as an unmodified or clean opinion on your financial statements. It's the highest opinion that we can give. We had no issues uh from a financial reporting standpoint. Um, to echo uh what Mert mentioned, uh, you did, you're, you're seeing a change in the document you received this year uh to submit your financial statement to the ASPO Certificate of Excellence programs. There's some extra uh information that gets added to this financial statement to provide additional context. You'll find a, a more robust introductory section uh that gives the district more of a chance to kind of put in context the financial information included in there. And then there's some statistical information in the back of that um that helps also put that in a long-term perspective, kind of see the trends over the last ten years for a lot of the, the information in there. So um it, it does make it a more, let's say, robust financial document and hopefully provides some, some good information for your users of the financial statements. As far as the results uh over your financial reporting, um, we had no internal control matters or compliance matters to report as far as the preparation of your annual financial statements this year. With regard to Minnesota legal compliance, uh, we did have one finding to report there. Uh, one of the things we test is timely payment of claims. You have thirty-five days to pay claims from the later of the time that you receive either the goods or services or the invoice for goods or services. Um, two of the twenty-five transactions that we pulled the test were not paid within that thirty-five day window. Um, in both cases, these were early in the fiscal year when you had uh some turnover and a lot of, of new people coming in and out of your business services department. Um, I think this is something that's pretty much already been resolved by the end of the year, but because it did uh come up in our test, we do have to report it, so. That is it for Minnesota legal compliance. As far as your federal single audit, um, we issue a separate opinion on whether your schedule of expenditures of federal awards is fairly stated in relation to your overall financial statements. We did issue a clean opinion on that again this year. Uh, I'm also happy to report there were no internal control or compliance matters uh that we noted in our audit of your federal expenditures this year. Finally, uh, part of our process each year, if there were any findings in the previous year's audit, we're required to follow up on those. And just to give you an update, uh, we did have a couple of things that were reported based on the district's 2022 fiscal year audit. Um, in your June thirty, 2022 financial statements, uh, we noted an internal control finding because there was some, uh, some audit adjustments that we noted that needed to be uh recorded in order to issue fairly stated financial statements that year. Again, I think this mainly had to do with the turnover you had in your business office at the time where uh some construction invoices were missed and needed to be recorded to accrue some additional liabilities. Uh, also, in our federal audit, uh, one of the things that have to be documented if you're doing business uh using federal dollars with a vendor where you're spending over certain thresholds, um, you're required to go out. Excuse me, there's, there's some uh resources where you can go out and check and make sure that those parties uh are not suspended or debarred from doing business on contracts that involve federal dollars. Uh, and that process was not being documented. And you need to keep documentation that you did that uh for those vendors prior to doing business with them. Uh, we went and retested both of those uh in 2023, and both uh came, came out clean. We had no similar findings this year, so both of those were fixed in twenty-three. I'll just stop here and ask before I go on to the financial information, any questions on anything I've covered so far? Okay. Then I'm just going to go through a, a few of the financial trends that uh we, we look at and track as far as the district's financial condition. Um, this is a graph showing a ten-year history of the statewide uh average unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of operating expenditures. So this is a little different calculation than you use for your policy. It's based on uh the Department of Education's calculation for statutory operating debt, but we do it just because we have actually some statewide data to give you a little bit of context. Uh, so as you can see, based on this calculation for 2023, at the end of the year, you had about fourteen and a half percent of your annual expenditures uh in your unrestricted fund balance. Um, the trend for the last five years there, based on the, the fund balances you've been maintaining based on your policy, um, you've been kind of in the neighborhood of about two-thirds of what the average school district in the state has been maintaining there. You've been pretty consistent year to year, kind of the same trend, but you've, you're running a little leaner than the average district tends to. Another thing that we track is the number of students served. Uh, this shows that information over the last ten years, both in terms of your adjusted average daily membership and pupil units. The reason this is important is because it drives your general education funding formula and a number of your other funding formulas. Um, for the 2023 fiscal year, you served an average daily membership of about eighty-five hundred and eighty-two, which is kind of the raw students in the seats. Um, that was up about two hundred and eighteen from the year before. When you apply uh the weighting factors for the various grade levels, that converts to pupil units of about nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-two. Uh, that was an increase of two hundred and thirty-eight or a little over two and a half percent. Um, you can kind of see from the trend there during 2020 and 2021, uh, during those COVID years, you did have a little bit of a drop in your student population, which we saw statewide. There were a lot of, a lot of uh kids being homeschooled, doing different things during that time, but you have recovered nicely. You had a, about a one and a half percent increase in 2022, and as I mentioned, about a two and a half percent increase in your student population in 2023. There we go. The district's general fund, this is primary operating fund. This gives you uh some idea over the last ten years where you've been at year-end in terms of your cash position and your unrestricted fund balances. Uh, the blue bar representing cash, uh, you had about forty-one and a half million dollars in cash and investments at the end of the year and about twenty point six million dollars in fund balance. Uh, kind of the difference there is you do get cash collections for the first half of your uh property tax levy, which actually isn't revenue to you until the following year, but you're getting those cash collections in, and that's why you're seeing the difference between cash and fund balance. This is kind of the numbers behind your, your fund balances. Um, you did see uh an increase uh of about two and a half million dollars in total in fund balance. This breaks it down into the different components that you reported in, in the general fund. Um, your uh non-spendable fund balances are basically your, your inventories and prepaids. Uh, there are things where it's still an asset that you're able to use the following year, but the cash can't be respent on something else, so that gets reported separately. Uh, restricted fund balances are mainly kind of the state mandated spending restrictions that you have for certain uh revenue streams. Most of the four point three million dollars uh that you see there in your case is related uh to capital uh programs. Your capital, our operating capital restriction and long-term facilities maintenance. Um, restricted fund balances went up by about one and a half million compared to the prior year. Uh, your committed fund balance then is something that you, as a governing body, have done by, by resolution and policy uh to commit dollars, and that's kind of for cash flow. Uh, you've got about two percent of your um uh your, your unassigned expenditures for the following year is what you set aside in that commitment. Uh, and then unassigned fund balances again are internally earmarked. These are a little less formal. You don't have to do them by resolution, but um you've got uh assignments of about five point five million dollars. The bulk of that, about four point two million, is set aside for separation and retirement. Uh, you do have about eight hundred twenty-five thousand dollars assigned for specific uh carryover, budget carryovers that sites didn't spend, uh, and another little over half a million dollars for some uh programming assignments that you're carrying over from year to year. And then that unassigned fund balance can be spent for any purpose. There's no external or internal earmark or restriction on that. Uh, that was about eight million dollars at the end of the year. Uh, so we kind of track year to year what that is as a percent of your total fund expenditures. As you can see at the, if you can see those little tiny numbers uh below the, the table there, you were pretty stable uh from 2022 to 2023, a little over eleven percent uh in terms of those final three categories as a percent of your annual expenditures. Um, a little under six percent in just the unassigned fund balances as a percent of expenditures. Your policy, you actually peg it to your budget. Um, you try to keep that unassigned fund balance between six to ten percent of your following year's unassigned uh adopted budget expenditures. Uh, and you were right about seven percent uh with this fund balance all year, right, in your policy. General fund expenditures for the year were um one hundred and forty-three and a half million dollars. You were over budget by about one point three percent, roughly one point eight million dollars. Uh, almost all of that variance came in the other category as you're looking at the graph there. Um, the kind of big things in there are your investment income and things like uh admissions, tuition, donations, um, things that are a little uh change, changeable year to year and hard to predict. Uh, you budget that pretty conservatively, so you're about two point one million dollars higher than budget and about two point four million dollars higher than the prior year uh as far as what you took in in those, in those uh different areas. One of the big things there that all of our districts saw is your investment income um due to the changes in interest rates and also the way the market was. Um, if you're holding investments that um have a maturity that goes more than one year, you have to mark those to market every year. So even though you tend to hold those to full maturity and, and end up in the same place regardless, uh, as the market goes up or down, you do have to recognize any gain or loss, even though you haven't sold those investments. So, uh, in 2022, a lot of our districts actually had negative investment income because of market conditions, and that did come back in 2023. So a lot of that improvement was in your investment income. Uh, your property taxes were about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars under budget. That was kind of another quirky thing that happened this year because the state decided to use some of their federal dollars uh to pay for some of the unemployment uh that districts, unemployment insurance costs that uh districts were incurring. So some of the levies the districts had been doing related to that, uh, there ended up being some negative adjustments coming through the tax shift for that. Um, so that, that's the big reason why your property tax revenue came in under budget for 2023, is some of those adjustments came through in your levy. On the expenditure side, you spent about a hundred and forty point seven million dollars in 2023. You're about a million and a half dollars under budget there. Um, a couple of kind of offsetting variants, your salaries and benefits were just about two million dollars under budget. A lot of that had to do with not being able to fill all of your budgeted positions. It's challenging labor market again. This is a trend we're seeing with a lot of our districts. Um, so kind of the, the flip side of that is your purchase services uh go up. You filled some of that with some outside purchase services. And another kind of big thing in that purchase service area is transportation costs, another trend we're seeing in a lot of our districts. Um, it's been very challenging uh to keep those transportation costs under control, and you're, you're no exception there. Uh, also, your uh supply costs were about one point eight million dollars under budget, and a lot of that is just, has to do with the timing of some of the uh instruction technology purchases that you were doing. Let's briefly touch on your two other operating funds, your food service and community service funds. These are smaller funds, but um also very important to the district. Your uh food service fund accounts for your child nutrition program. Uh, you ended the year uh with a total fund balance there of just under one point two million dollars. That was down about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, right, in, in line with what you budgeted. You budgeted to spend that down by about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, one of the big things that happened there is you saw a shift back from uh the program that you were running in, in 2022. And you see from the graph there, your, your fund balance went up quite a bit. Again, that's a trend a lot of our districts saw. Um, you were running a program in that year where uh all students were receiving a federally funded free lunch. And uh the reimbursement rates were higher than the typical ones that the state program pays. Uh, so a lot of our districts saw an improvement to their uh fund balance in that fund during that time. Um, for 2023, you're kind of reverting back to the more traditional program where you are getting more of your revenue from actually lunch sales and the uh reimbursements are being split more between state and federal funding. Um, your community service fund uh fund balance ended the year about one point seven million dollars. Uh, that went up about ninety-eight thousand dollars. Again, you budgeted for a small increase of about six thousand dollars, so that was right in line with what you were projecting. Um, the recovery that you see there, uh, the, again, very common trend for school districts. A lot of those programs were uh shut down or put on hold or under pretty severe restrictions during 2020 and 2021. And now they're opening up again. You're seeing that. You're seeing that participation go back up in the level of revenues and expenditures, kind of going back to a more typical, typical year. And then the final table I will share with you, there we go. The very first statement in your financial statements is your district credit statement of net position. This takes all this fund information, converts it to a full accrual basis, which brings in some of the long-term things that aren't reported in your funds. And of the big items there are your capital assets and depreciation, the debt that you have outstanding to either acquire or build those capital assets. And of course, everyone's favorite, your proportionate share of the two statewide pension plans that you have to report, PERA and TRA. Every district has to report their share of the underfunding of those statewide pension plans in these entity-wide financial statements, just to kind of give the user of your financial statements some idea of what commitments are out there, because part of that plan is attributable to the employees you have participating in it. On this basis, you had a total net position of about, a deficit of about seven point four million dollars. The top part of this, if you can see how you get from total fund balances and all the funds we talked about of about forty-three million dollars to the good, to that seven point four million dollar deficit, most of that is directly attributable, all of it frankly, to the pension and OPEB liability line. You see there, you've got about a hundred and twenty-one million dollar liability reporting. Most of that is relating to your participation in those state PERA and TRA pension plans. The good news is you see that increase there of about twenty-six and a half million dollars compared to the last year. A lot of that in the unrestricted category, and a lot of that happened because the funding level of those plans in the most recent actuarial study did improve. You see about a twenty million dollar increase, your smaller deficit in that pension line up on top there. That's, that all kind of falls to that unrestricted net position line and is driving that deficit that you see there, but that did improve. The state's been pushing the funding levels up on those plans and doing some things to try and get the, the funding levels of those in a more positive place. So that was everything I had intended to cover from a numbers standpoint. Questions on anything that I spoke to?
Board members, questions, comments?
Director Woodard, can you, this ASBO designation, when will we find out about that?
Yeah, so we have until, I believe, December thirty-first to actually submit our application. It might be actually a little bit later than that. Since we're a first-time participant, we might go through a more rigorous review process, but I would expect that we would receive the award, and it would be an official communication sent to Chair Allenberg and Superintendent Stanley in the spring of twenty-four, if not the summer of twenty-four.
And that, just for clarification, that is a national recognition for financial operations?
Absolutely. So as Mr. Lauer had mentioned before, we are raising the level of our financial reporting from just basic financial statements to the annual comprehensive financial report, the highest standard in government, and so the ASBO will review individual submissions to make sure that we comply with every component of the ACFOR, and so we'll be recognized for doing so.
Great, thank you, and I want to thank you and your team, as well as Mr. Lauer, for the work that you do for, on behalf of our district, because it is one of those topics where if it's going well, no one is paying attention to it, but if it's not going well, we really feel it. So thank you to you and your team for the work that you do.
You're welcome.
Yeah, before we move on to the next agenda item, I just wanted to thank you, Director Woodard, for your outstanding work in really elevating the excellence in our business operations. I think it's such a fundamental part of our district that it's like an unsung hero of our district, so thank you very much. It doesn't go unnoticed by board members. I really appreciate it, and thank you for coming back. Really appreciate it, so thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next discussion item, which is our fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine financial forecast and assumptions, again with Director Woodard.
Give a moment for the presentation to appear. Chair Allenberg, members of the school board, Dr. Stanley, it's that time of the year where we begin our, our preparations for the next fiscal year as well as subsequent fiscal years. Today, you certified our levy, so that's going to set thirty-five percent of our revenue budget for next school year. Part of this process involves taking all of our current staffing, our current revenue streams, what we believe will occur in the next one to five years, and creating a forecast, which will ultimately paint a picture regarding our fund balance for the next five years. Before I get into the future, I'd like to take a quick step back to the past. You'll recall that last school year, I gave a similar presentation which indicated a four million dollar shortfall between revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year that we're currently operating, twenty twenty-four. At that time, we immediately engaged the budget reduction, reallocation, and revenue generation process, otherwise known as the Berg, in order to contain our expenditures or create revenues for a net difference of four million dollars. We were able to do that with a number of different solutions, including the right sizing of licensed staff at the middle school. We also went to a pre-pandemic staffing level in terms of paraprofessionals at the kindergarten first and second grades. We applied chargebacks that were previously not done to our special revenue funds, the food service fund and the community service fund, and we also froze operating capital allocations to school sites. That process was successful in keeping our school classrooms mostly unaffected, which is difficult to do when seventy percent of your, your salaries are, seventy percent of your budget, rather, is salaries and benefits, most of those for licensed staff and paraprofessionals. So we were pleased with the result. We fixed our problem. We had a conservative assumption regarding what the state would do in the twenty twenty-three legislative session. We assumed only a two percent increase on the formula and no other increases to other revenue categories, so we fixed our own situation, and we hope that the state would come through with additional funding, which they did, as you'll see on the next slide. There we go. So the twenty twenty-three legislative session appropriated an additional two percent above and beyond the two percent we already assumed, so that's an additional one point three million dollars that we're receiving this year. Next school year, we already know that's going to be two percent. More importantly perhaps, the state also decided to somewhat fix the broken special education revenue formula. In years past, we were receiving about six percent of the calculated cost subsidy. This year and going forward, we'll receive forty-four percent. So that's a massive increase in funding. We'll receive about three to three and a half million dollars of additional funding for expenditures that we're already incurring, so that's a huge plus. A couple of additional smaller revenue categories were added. School library aid, school districts are required to hire at least one licensed media specialist. This district currently staffs nine, and so we're able to take that money and just add it to our bank account. Also, student support personnel aid, we're able to add a licensed psychologist, school nurse, or social worker, or maintain existing positions. We added a half position to support EVP this year, and so part of that funding is going there. All of those funding sources will be ongoing. However, for the purposes of our forecast, we're assuming that they will remain flat in all future years. Again, revenue assumptions, as I mentioned earlier, two percent, we already know that's locked in for fiscal year twenty-five. Going forward, the state agreed to tie that to inflation with a floor of two percent and a cap of three percent. For the purposes of our forecast, we're just going to assume two percent in all years, which might seem conservative. However, if you'll recall in years past, when we didn't know what the funding would be, most school districts would assume either zero or one percent in the out years, just to be conservative. The twenty-one hundred and ninety-seven dollars in operating referendum revenue that we'll receive for next year, which you actually certified tonight, is voter-approved. Of course, we last approved that in twenty seventeen. That does grow with inflation. However, in the future years, we're only adding about three percent. We're anticipating that the Federal Reserve and the work that they're doing to combat inflation will work in the long term and will be closer to the two and a half to three percent range. Special education, as I mentioned, we're expecting that to simply grow with our expenditures. That revenue program is directly tied to what you actually spend in those programs, and so as those expenditures increase, we expect a proportionate increase to the revenue. We'll see if the state comes through with additional funding, and we'll adjust in future years if needed. There's a note there about the tax base increasing about six and a half percent in all future years. That one only affects the capital projects levy or the tech levy funding. That directly increases with the tax base increase, which is nice. So as the city of Edina's property wealth increases, that levy will increase in direct proportion. Important to keep in mind, though, that that funding is rather restricted and can only be used for capital assets, vehicles, but mostly technology and infrastructure support, which is what we use it for in Edina. So overall, pretty flat is what we're anticipating. Expenditures are actually historically a little bit easier to predict, however, in the current climate with, I wouldn't say hyperinflation, but extremely elevated inflation, a tightening labor market, and extreme upward pressure on salaries, it's becoming a little bit more difficult to predict what expenditures will do, particularly as seventy percent or so of our expenditures are salaries and benefits. It's important to actually start with twenty twenty-four, not twenty twenty-five. You'll remember that the school board approved a budget for this school year with a five million dollar deficit. After the state came through with the additional funding, it was actually too late in the budget cycle for us to deploy those funds, and so we decided to let those hit the fund balance and then reconvene and decide what to do in future years. We ratified a collective bargaining agreement tonight and also several others over the last twelve months. That means that that five million dollars will actually go directly to supporting those staff that we value so much, and that will put us in a position where the starting point for fiscal year twenty-five is likely to be under our six percent unassigned fund balance policy. As you'll see in subsequent slides, we're predicting to be at about five point six percent at the end of fiscal year twenty-four, and that's directly due to the new collective bargaining agreements. Other revenue category, or expenditure categories, rather, are increasing by the amounts indicated on the screen. In the outer years, I think we're going to return to more reasonable increases. The licensed salaries, which make up about fifty percent of the total salaries and benefits of the school district, we anticipate those are going to increase anywhere from three point seven to four point six percent year over year. Administrative and other non-licensed salaries, we expect to be slightly lower. Historically, that's the trend. The licensed salaries tend to go up more rapidly than the other salaries. You'll notice that utilities, we are increasing by ten percent year over year. Over the last two years, we've seen a ten percent increase, which is slightly elevated. We would expect a return to more stability in future years. However, keep in mind that we are adding square footage to a couple of our facilities, and so we do expect elevated utility costs as a result of that. Liability insurance, a twenty-five percent increase predicted for next school year. That was our prediction last year for this year. However, if you recall, in June, we reported that our increase was actually thirty-six percent. The hardening of the property and liability market continues, especially as insured values go up. We do a lot of long-term facilities maintenance in our district, and as appraisers come through and revalue our properties, the insurance also goes up as a result. Construction costs increase, the value of the property increases, we pay more to insure those properties. Hopefully, the fifteen percent, ten percent, five percent step downs occur. This is a relatively small part of our budget, though, so not, not reason to be alarmed. When you synthesize all this data into the more than fourteen thousand different expenditure and revenue combinations that we have, you get the, the following picture. Again, this assumes status quo level services. We're going to continue to operate nine buildings with nine principals. We're going to have one superintendent, one director of finance, the same number of teachers, the same number of administrators, et cetera. So when you extrapolate all of those expenditures with the assumptions I've used, as well as our revenues, you'll see that in the current fiscal year, rather than the more than eight percent fund balance that we originally approved our budget at, we're going to end likely under the six percent fund balance policy. And if unchanged, that fund balance will simply become smaller and smaller over time, about three point nine percent at the end of fiscal year twenty-five, and a negative nineteen percent at the end of fiscal twenty-nine, where this condition to be left untreated. Per board policy, the fund balance policy, I believe, seven oh three. Once the administration is aware that the school board or the school district will be under that six percent cap on our unassigned fund balance, we would immediately present a plan to bring ourselves to at least six percent in the subsequent fiscal year. So at a future school board meeting, I believe in January, we'll be presenting a number of options to bring us out of that position. In order to reach six percent right on the money, it's going to be about a two point five six percent, two point five six million, rather, reduction. I don't think that that's going to be the recommendation that the administration brings to the school board in January. We're still discussing what that will look like. However, it would likely be a higher number than the two point five six, because were we to only get to six percent at the end of fiscal year twenty-five, if left untreated, we would immediately go under six percent, because expenditures are not going to remain flat. So we'll provide a number of different options at the next school board meeting, and also our, our recommendation for what we should do. At that point, we would seek school board approval on a parameter for a reduction, and we would begin the more public Berg process, engaging with different stakeholders, parents, staff, senior leaders throughout the district, and we would ultimately come back with a list of containment options in February or March. That's where we're at.
Board members, questions, comments? Director Nippel?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Woodard, for the update and the forecast. I want to just express appreciation for your continued clarity in presentation of budget information, not only for our board review, but also for the community. There's always a lot of moving parts. What I particularly appreciate is how we are balancing an incredible legislative session that was completed last year with some really needed and welcome benefits and gains with revenue, but also the fact that that doesn't bring the district forward or just assure that there can't be any budget cuts. So I appreciate the update regarding our fund balance, and just wanted to remind the community of our responsibility as a board to maintain a healthy fund balance, how that supports our ability to operate as a district, and just look forward to that forecast so that we collectively can remain informed as to what's coming forward, and then make those decisions together as to how to best balance it. So, thank you.
Anything else? Great, thank you very much. That ends our discussion items. Are there any leadership updates?
I do have a couple of updates. First of all, I sent this out in my message yesterday as well, and I want to take any moment that I can to talk about our fifth grade students who, their experiment was chosen to go to the International Space Station. And I'd like to talk a little bit about what happens, how they are chosen by a national team, that isn't a local team that chooses that experiment. And so we work with local experts to narrow it down to five to ten experiments. We had a total of two hundred, and then those suggestions are sent off to a national team, and that national team actually chose our fifth grade students' experiment, where they will be working with astronauts on the germination of raspberries. Their report made complete sense to me. They explained why raspberries are so beneficial for nutrition and how it would help anyone who, who, who lives on the moon. So we are really excited about that. They were thrilled, their parents were thrilled. We were over at Creek Valley for an, an assembly the other day to announce it, and that was just an incredible time. The other thing is that I announced in the video that I sent home to everyone yesterday, but also via communications through our communications department, is Paul Pasol has now formally agreed to move into permanent principalship. He's done a great job for the past six months. We continue to receive accolades, whether I'm at PLC or I'm in the building talking with students. Many, many of my cabinet members continue to receive accolades for him, so we're excited that he is willing to permanently become a Hornet, and so, which may have been a little difficult, because he was in Wayzetta for a few years there. So I'm really excited about that. And then finally, I received a commendation from one of our board members, and I'd like to hand out that commendation. So I received a letter that says, "Dear Superintendent Stanley, enclosed, you will find a certificate honoring Karen Gabler for completing the MSBA Leadership Development Program, which has been accomplished by Karen successfully attending the Leadership Workshop Series, Phases One through Four. We at MSBA appreciate the effort." We at MSBA appreciate the efforts and dedication of all Minnesota school board members that all Minnesota school board members put forth for the sake of public schoolchildren, and we appreciate you for their continued participation." So there's going to be a luncheon where Karen will be honored at the leadership conference of the, during the MSBA conference, and I have a certificate here for you that I would like to award.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that.
That, it takes a lot of work to go through all of those sessions, and we really appreciate that that occurred. And so, other than saying, "Oh, we are heading into winter break," and just encourage families and all of our staff and students to just enjoy this break. You won't be able to go sledding, but you'll find something fun to do. And thank you to everyone for all you do to support our district.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Oops. I'm sorry, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now all in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is approved, and the meeting is adjourned.